Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome. Thank you for joining us this afternoon, for being here. It is Tuesday, March 28th, 2023, 5:02 PM. Sorry for the late start, just getting a couple of things tied up. But we will go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is our regular board meeting. We're glad to have all of my board colleagues with us this afternoon. Dr. Stubblefield, to all of our staff, welcome, and to all of our guests, students, and families, and any community members present. We welcome you and are glad to have you here in our board meeting this afternoon. So as we do at every board meeting, I'll read our board norms and protocols. We agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we're following our norms when conducting district business. Again, good afternoon. Thank you for joining us, everybody, and we'll go ahead and get started with our roll call. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark. Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
Thank you. Board, before we approve the agenda, I just wanted to point out, in Board Agenda Item Number 10A, you'll see that it says "New" under the Agenda Item. That was accidentally removed before it was published, so it's technically a new item, but it was on the agenda already scheduled to be presented today. So I would ask for a motion to amend the agenda to add Item 10A, which is the Academic and Discipline Data Report.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? All right, Ms. Smith?
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved? Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Saying none, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. So we're going to jump right into our agenda. We have, this is our only meeting in March, regular board meeting, so we get to do a lot tonight, including part of, I know, the board's favorite part of any board meeting, when we get to recognize excellence from our students and staff. So first up, I would invite Dr. Sutherland to come to the microphone as we celebrate our Employee of the Month. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Lopez, and Board President, Dr. Stubblefield, and all of our board, Kansas City Public Schools, and all who serve. I am Dr. April Sutherland, and I'm here today to present our Employee of the Month for March. After I introduce our employee of the month, it's very important that we remember, once the teacher or student is announced, we would want that person to come to the front, so the communications team can capture a picture of you for social media and the webpage recognition. We will have three photos, the first being the student or the teacher with the superintendent and the board, the second, we would ask for the nominating staff and principal to join, and our third picture would be for our families that are here to support. At this time, I would like to have Marcus Johnson come to the front. Marcus Johnson is a basketball coach at Windott High School. He was nominated by Chavette Dickens. She says Mr. Johnson's, due to his effortless, caring personality, has changed our boys' basketball team here at Windott. All coaches want to win, but Mr. Johnson wants shots outside the classroom, in the community, and within families to build up our young black men. When Mr. Johnson approached Ms. Dickens last spring about his goals, she was so excited to support him and was encouraged to do more as she shared his vision for the All-American Mentoring Program. Their young men at Windott are seeing more, experiencing more, and have a high rate of succeeding because Mr. Johnson wants more for them and for themselves. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Marcus Johnson.
Good evening, Board President Lopez, members of the Board of Directors, Superintendent Dr. Anna Stubblefield. I am excited to present our USD 500 Students of the Month for the month of March 2023. World-renowned author Angela Duckworth said, "We must understand grit. It has two components, both passion and perseverance." Our March Student Honorees have demonstrated both passion and perseverance in their journeys to become USD 500 Students of the Month. Our students that are recommended for Student of the Month are nominated under six domains: Attendance Recognition, Outstanding Academic Performance, Positive Behavior, Commitment to Service and Citizenship, Scholarship and/or Community Recognition, and Outstanding Athletic Our first Student of the Month representing our early childhood students is none other than John Michael Bell. John Michael Bell is an early childhood scholar at Kansas City, Kansas Early Childhood Center. He was nominated by Dorothy Betts, a teacher at KCK ECC. She states, "I'm so happy to nominate John Michael Bell for Student of the Month in the categories of Positive Behavior and Service Citizenship." Just seeing his name says a lot about this little guy. When a parent does not believe that you are talking about their child and begins to swell with tears of joy, you know that you have a special person in your presence. John Michael is a young leader and sets positive examples in the classroom. He finds pretty much everything interesting and loves to know more about how things work. The school has witnessed his transformation from a shy introvert to a humble, extroverted thinker. One way that he's shown his leadership ability is his desire to be the first student to complete this task, but also to help others. Because of this, so many of the AM students have followed his lead. He is a proud member of the Duck Team who finds joy in coming to school, being with his friends, and receiving accolades from the adults in the classroom. John Michael Bell was not able to be with us tonight because of the flu, but his mother said, "We are so very proud of him. He is truly disappointed that he is sick on this big day, but we are so thankful for this honor." Please give John Michael Bell a round of applause. Our Elementary Student of the Month comes from Lowell Brun Elementary School. He is Luis Fernando Montez Morales. Luis, who prefers to be called Fernando, is a fifth-grade student. He was nominated by Joseph Page, his teacher. Fernando has worked so hard to get where he is today. He started the school year somewhat lost in the shuffle, however, he's coming to his own. He has had some difficulty completing tasks and finding his way. However, he's definitely rose to the occasion, and he's always willing to work hard. He gives his all in the classroom, he gives his all in the school, and he never has an issue with hard work. He gets very excited about the opportunity to read from our MTSS stories used in the 95% group. He even takes to the story and reads to the teacher so she could share it with him. He has come such a long way in both reading and math, making everyone in the school so proud of him. He is being nominated under the pillar of outstanding academics. He's kind of shy, because I see he's gone already. But Fernando loves to play with his toys, and all kinds of toys. He doesn't want to limit himself. He says, "When he grows up, he wants to be a KCK PD police officer."
All right.
Our Middle School Student of the Month comes to us from the mighty Arrowhead Middle School. Romel Cole is an eighth-grade student at Arrowhead. He was nominated by April Banks under the pillar of Positive Behavior. Romel is a Positive Behavior role model at Arrowhead. He was on the undefeated football team in the fall. He displayed leadership skills to both teachers and students during the fall, and he continues to do so even outside of the season. An example of one of his leadership displays is when other students are not talking nicely, he always corrects them and tells them how they should treat their teachers. He always says that he demonstrates leadership and positive behavior because he wants all to be proud. The class in high were speechless for a minute because he's so awe-inspiring. As an eighth grader, I just went over and gave him a hug and a thank you. We definitely need more students like him. I know this is instilled by his parents at home, so they should get credit, too. Fun facts about Romel, he is looking forward to joining the Washington Football Team in the fall. He loves to work out when he is not at school, and he wants to pursue a football career and also major in engineering. Last but not least, we would like to recognize our High School Student of the Month from Alfred Fairfax Academy, Isabella Hernandez. Isabella is a senior at Alfred Fairfax Academy, and the staff would like to nominate her as the March Student of the Month due to her grit, her grind, and her determination to graduate from high school. Bella joined our AFA Falcon family in early September this year and won the staff over by her hard work ethic. She was not satisfied with just getting by, she wanted to achieve more. Bella is a self-starter who advocates for herself, collaborates with others to find solutions for roadblocks, and never gives up. Counselor Schueller at AFA said, "Bella continues to keep a positive attitude despite any challenges life has thrown at her." Without going into details, she has overcome so many obstacles, but she shows up with a positive attitude, and she also tries to emphasize the importance of school with her cousin and all that she meets. Social worker Potter at the school said, "It's a tremendous honor to write a nomination for Isabella. Without a doubt, Isabella epitomizes the very best of our campus, and her value to the community is unmatched. Each day, she has a positive attitude, she is kind to others, is always smiling, and passes her happiness. She encourages others to do the right thing. My interactions and discussions with her have allowed her to demonstrate that she truly has a sharp mind, curiosity, and the eagerness to learn." Isabella said, "AFA, one of the greatest things for her has been the staff making time to have one-on-one talks with her about life and school." When she graduates in a few months, she is going to go to KCKCC Tech for cosmetology, but she doesn't want to just limit herself to that, she wants to explore other options as well. Advice that she would like to give to other students, "If you think you can do it, just continue to try hard and make good choices. Do your work and always give your best, and it will work out for you."
One additional fun fact about Bella is she also serves on the Superintendent Student Advisory Committee, and she advocates for all of the students at AFA and across the district, so congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Sutherland and Dr. Wilson. Congratulations to our Employee of the Month and all of our Students of the Month. We're so proud, proud of all of you, your teachers, your family, so thank you for joining us to celebrate you today. Don't go anywhere. We're going to take some quick pictures, but if you just give us a minute, we're going to take care of a quick business matter, and then we're going to ask each of you to come up for some pictures with our board members and superintendent. Board, so we can continue with the meeting after the pictures, I'd entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of parties involved under coma to include Mr. Greg Goheen, Dr. Stubblefield, and Ms. Samree Devon, going in at 5... Oh, give us... 5:30 for five minutes.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Saying none. Ms. Smith, Board, roll call, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you.
So moved.
Any questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're back in open session. We're going to continue with our agenda. Next up is our consent agenda, item number four, entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Seeing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have no community comments tonight, but again, just a reminder for folks, everyone is welcome and invited to submit community comment. Just please contact our board clerk, Ms. Leslie Smith, prior to, the Monday prior to a board meeting to sign up, and you can make a comment at the board meeting. Moving on with agenda item number six, we will hear from our superintendent of schools, Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a few quick announcements or reminders. First, I want to say the shining stars and the little rockets represented New Chelsea Elementary School at the National Robotics Competition held at the Kansas City Convention Center in downtown Kansas City during the National Society of Black Engineers Convention last week. The two teams did not place in the top five, but we were pleased at how well they worked together and how they represented Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. They competed against teams from across the United States. The purchasing department at KC KPS held an important vendor fair here at Central Office on yesterday. More than 80 vendors and businesses, including several departments here at KC KPS, took part in the vendor fair yesterday. The purpose of the fair was to bring old and new vendors together so that they can introduce themselves to one another and, most importantly, explain what their products and services are. We were able to meet and greet several local vendors and also to form and establish communication lines and partnerships and renew some old partnerships. So I want to thank Wayne Correll, Brian Hernandez, and the purchasing team for their collaborative efforts with local agencies to educate our vendors on how business with Kansas City area organizations take place. Again, I want to congratulate two of our own teachers who were nominated for the Kansas Elementary and Secondary Teacher of the Year at the Region Four Dinner on Sunday. So we did celebrate Cecilia Marino, who was our elementary representative from JFK, and Lee Ann Richardson, our secondary representative from FL Slago early in the year, but we also want to say congratulations to them as they were recognized at the banquet. Finally, I just want to remind everyone that our KISA accreditation visitation is tomorrow. It will be, it will be here at district office starting at 8:00 a.m. Those of you that you have time in your schedule, please stop by. This visitation will determine our accreditation status, and we'll find out about that in a few months after the visits. And all of the board, you should have received a binder of all of the artifacts that we will be sharing on tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. Just a few notes that I wanted to share today. Again, just good evening, and it's great to see everybody here with us today. Hopefully, everyone had a great and restful spring break, and you're ready to finish out the school year with energy and just pumped up and ready to go for all of our students and staff. So hopefully you had some, some time to re-energize and rest up. Reminder, board members, that we do have our board self-evaluation and retreat on April 20th from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. You should have a board, a calendar invitation in your inbox if you haven't seen it already, and we'll get more information on logistics to you, but please make sure that that's on your calendar. Dr. Marsha Weisman from KASB will be joining us to help facilitate that conversation. She will be, if she hasn't already, will be reaching out to each one of you to get feedback about the retreat and the evaluation process. There will be a survey that she'll send you electronically to fill out. Please make sure you take time to fill out that survey and complete it for her. It's as part of our yearly self-evaluation that we have to do as a board, and just be ready for a great conversation. So looking forward to that. And also, if you, again, when Dr. Weisman reaches out to you, just give her any feedback on items that you think would be important for us to cover. I know the time will go by quick, but we'll try to get to everything that we can in that time. Additionally, one of the things that we will cover is our board handbook. It's been a couple of years since we've had the time to revisit the handbook and actually review and make sure that everything still makes sense and for, for our board. So Ms. Dawn Downing has sent you a link that has a link to the actual handbook and also a space and place where you can give comments, feedback, questions, anything that you want us to visit within the handbook. So if you could make sure to send any feedback to Dawn by Monday, April 17th, then she'll compile all of that information, and we'll have it for our board retreat, hopefully before that, so we can review, but it'll be a great time for us to, to review our handbook and just make sure that we are following our, our own policies and procedures as a board as well. So looking forward to that conversation on April 20th. And then another reminder of the board's Listening and Learning Session that will happen on Saturday, April 22nd. We invite any and everyone to come out and be a part of that. That will happen here at Central Office. It's a Saturday at 10:00 a.m., so we invite everyone to come and be a part of that. The first one we held at Windout High School was, was successful. We had some really great conversation just about what our community wants to see from us as a board and the district, and was, were able to share some really good data on academics and others. So some of which we'll hear again tonight around our academic data. But just a reminder, hopefully you have that on your calendar already, and I'd invite any, any community members that want to attend. This is a session for you. We want to hear from you, so please make sure you, you're able to attend. We will have an interpreter in Spanish, and if you know that you are attending and you speak a language other than English or Spanish, if you could let us know, and we will try to make sure that we have proper interpretation for any additional languages that, that may, may be needed during that session. So please invite a friend, bring them here. No better way to spend a Saturday morning than here at Central Office with your school board members, right? Yeah. Board members, I know, nobody laughed. Try to bring a little humor around, but. Board members, just a reminder that on our April 11th board meeting, our regular board meeting is being moved from the evening to the, the midday of, of, of that, for that meeting. So April 11th will be held at, our board meeting will be held at Gloria Willis from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So please make sure that's on your calendar. Again, public is welcome to attend as well. Staff, hopefully you have that on your calendar as well, but it's a great opportunity for us to get out into the schools and hold a session out at a school. So please make sure that is on your calendar, board members. And then just a couple of other quick announcements. If you haven't had a chance, I think there's, it might be on YouTube, but the Latin, Latina, Latinx Education Collaborative recently held a special conversation with our very own Jackie Rodriguez and Julia Linkus around our dual-language program. So I'd invite you to look that up if you, if you have a chance to learn a little bit more about our dual-language program. I know we've been talking about that a lot around here and, and what, what that means and what that'll look like. So just congratulations to Jackie and to Ms. Rodriguez and to Ms. Linkus for, for doing a great job and for representing the district and an exciting new program that we'll be rolling out next school year. And then finally, just one fun opportunity. Last night, I had the chance to participate in a discussion with the National Museum of the American, American Latino at the Smithsonian. So the Smithsonian has a, a museum specifically for the history, culture of Latinos in the United States, and they're hosting community conversations across the country, and they've been in Kansas City now for a couple of days, and I think today was their last session. It was a great turnout, great conversation about how they can bring the Smithsonian Museum to community, right? Not everybody has a chance to go out to DC and, and, and go to the museums, and so they're looking for ways to, to make it, to, to bring that museum and that experience and, and that rich history to different communities. So I know they were in Memphis, they were in Oklahoma City, they were in Kansas City. I think they're going out to Colorado next, and they're doing their tour around the country. So it was a really great conversation. I got to share some of the exciting work that we're doing here in Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, and got to just talk about how proud I am and, and of the things that we're doing as a district. And I shared with them that our student body population is made up, 56% of our students identify as Hispanic or Latino in Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, and they were just amazed by that number. 56% of our students in this district identify as Hispanic and Latino, and that is something that we definitely are proud of as well, the diversity in, in our district. And so that was just something they want to learn more about, more about how we serve and how we bring out that culture of all of our, all of our students, but, but they were impressed with just what we're doing here in the district. So great conversation, and I look forward to continuing that conversation to see how we can bring the Smithsonian experience to all of our students here in Kansas City, Kansas. So with that, I'll stop, and I'll open it up for other board members if you have anything you'd like to share. Ms. Drew.
Just like to say that I've been very busy during the month of March. I attended the Enough is Enough at J.C. Harman on the first, on the second. JAG has a competition of students who deliver speeches for competitiveness, and I was there at 8:00 in the morning and stayed there all day until 2:00 p.m. It was very interesting to listen to them speak and deliver in a very positive way. I also was online later with the SPED Department with Governor Kelly, talking about the funding that is coming toward that, and it's a challenge, but we are going to continue to try to move forward. On March 4th, I went to the Saturday Academy at KC KCC, where several of our students were participating and demonstrating how they are listening and learning and being able to do their best. I went on March 8 to Arrowhead Middle School. It was in the evening. They presented a play, and I have to give kudos to them because Billy Brain is definitely doing an excellent job teaching our students how they can become actors in trying to perform during particular plays. And they had a play titled Doc Doc Goose Goose, and it was a depiction of Mother Goose being a doctor, but yet and still showing how that they were going to, how they were dealing with the issues that came forth, and it was an excellent play. I had an opportunity to attend on March 9th at KC KCC, where they have Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge, and several students from Windout High School were there to present what they want to do as far as a future occupation as an entrepreneur. It was excellently done, but I'm going to give kudos to a special award that was given to one of the students who had done an excellent job, and the money for this particular event that took place, whereas awarding students with certain things that they could do, that they can get, was done by one of their teachers there, Mr. Jason Drew, who happens to be my son. And therefore, they presented a Youth Entrepreneurs' Challenge Award with his name on it to the student who won. And he takes his finances and give it to them so that they can be able to spend the money, to use it for everything. And I was just really impressed with the fact that he chose to do that, but yet and still, but they decided to give an award to a student with his name on it. And so I know that they're doing an excellent job at all of our schools. It was just that for that particular event, I was happy to be there, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drew. Ms. Page?
Yeah, I too attended the Enough is Enough program, and if we look at what's happening in the United States with our schools, we got to begin to speak up. It doesn't make sense that every day there's something happening at a school and someone's losing their lives. So I think as a So I think as a community, as a state and nation, we gotta do a better job. That should not be happening. And I participated in the Listening Tour at Windout. We didn't have as many parents and individuals from the community come, but those who did come had good ideas, and we just gotta get more people out. Hopefully, we'll have that on our station and people can see, and maybe if they see it, they'll feel more relaxed and know that it's not a threatening situation. We really want to hear from the community, and we really want it to work. And in order for it to work, it's gonna take all of us, not just us. It has to take the community, the business community, no matter who you are. If you don't have kids, you still need to be here because that same person may be at your nursing home, working with you and for you, so we better make sure everybody's prepared. I also went to the Academic Committee meeting, and we had two parents participate, and that was good. They touched on some things that we didn't think about, but we gotta begin to address. Went to the Boundary Committee meeting. That was good, and that we're trying to make sure we meet the needs of all our students and so forth. Teacher negotiation was good. Our goal is by May to hopefully have it all done and signed so that we can all leave out happy and work together. The Kansas State Teacher Award Program, we should've won. I think we got robbed, but what can we say? But we want to definitely thank our two representatives who did an excellent job, and all our teachers deserve an award. It's bad we can't give it to everybody, but we just want them to know that they're doing a good job. And then at Quindero Elementary School, I got to visit with my friends, Ms. Little's class and Ms. Dez, the principal. We had fun. We celebrated Women's History Month, and we looked at Bessie Coleman. We decorated. We made our airplanes, and we looked at Eleanor Ochoa, Mae Jamison, Sally Ride, who were astronauts, and we created our space suits and so forth. So we have a lot of fun, and if you, I always wanted to teach kindergarten, but I didn't think I had the heart for it, but I love them, and they make you feel good. And when you leave there, you know you've done something, you've touched somebody, and that should be a feeling we all feel, regardless of what grade level. And then, on a sad note, we lost one of our former teachers, Wanda Miller Norwood, who taught Spanish at Eisenhower, and I can't think of the other schools, but.
I speak Orlando.
Yeah, I couldn't remember what high school, but I thought about Eisenhower for sure. They're having her services April 8 at Thatcher's Funeral Home, and she was a phenomenal teacher. You know, we can't get everybody, but whenever we're here, we do want to give them their kudos for what they did for our kids in our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Humphries?
I'd like to share a little story. I want everyone to think back to when they were at sixth, seventh, eighth grade. Some of us, that's a long time ago. Some of us, it's just a few years. I've been out into schools for school visits, sports, music programs, plays, and the one thing that I still see that I saw when I was a fifth grader are boys walking down the hallway, jumping up, touch the doorframe, and touch a, do you know what I mean? To touch a banner. There is something about middle-school-age boys that they want to see how tall they are, I guess, but kids did that back in the 60s when I was in school. They still do it today. Some of us, seasoned people say, kids today are so different, but they're not. The boys are still doing the same thing. Sometimes the girl do it, but just think back and reminisce and think, our kids are kids, just like we were kids. And when you see them do that, smile, because it's half the time they don't even know that they're doing it. It's just something that I want everyone to think about. Kids are kids. We haven't changed that much.
Don't give me questions about that. Thank you.
It's up to you. That's my story.
Thank you, Ms. Humphries. Thank you for sharing. Any other board members? Okay. I do also just want to share our condolences on behalf of the board as well to Mr. Bill Brady's family, who we lost, as you all know or likely know. Mr. Brady served as a lobbyist for our district for a long time and has done some really amazing work in his life, and so we send our thoughts and condolences to his family during this time. They had his services this past weekend, and so we're just praying for them and wish his family encouragement and lots of prayer. So we're grateful to Mr. Brady and all that he brought to this district as well. Thank you. Okay, we will continue with our agenda. Next up, Agenda Item Number 7. We will hear from our Kansas City, Kansas Public Library and Ms. Carol Levers. I'd invite you to the podium. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, board. Good evening, Dr. Stubblefield. As promised, we will bring an update to our strategic planning plan, and here to present that to you is our Assistant Director, Samuel Moore. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Stubblefield and members of the board. I'm here to follow up from my presentation back in December on the progress of our strategic plan. As there, this is our committee members. They represent myself, our Arts and Communication Librarian, and our supervisory staff across from all of the different branches. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the audits that I talked about back in December, where we're at with them, the ones we've completed and what we've kind of done with some of that data. So the two that I'm gonna talk about right now is the EDI audit, which we have begun working with the Meriwether Group that are based here in KC to review all of our documents and our procedures through the lens of EDI. They will begin to also be having some focus groups that we're working with them on right now on planning, when they will be, trying to find time ranges that work within the entire community so we can get as wide a net as we possibly can, in addition to what will the questions of that be after we receive all that data back from them when they happen. We will then begin working with the district's DEI department to implement all of the changes that we see coming out of that audit. The next one is our American with Disabilities Act audit, which we currently have scheduled working with Amerisco, who have recently worked with other individuals within the Kansas City area, including the UG, but we will begin working with them. They have the audit planned for mid-April. They're gonna come out with a group of engineers and work and tour all of our locations with custodial staff, in addition with representation from the library. Once we get that done, we'll present that report to the branch managers for those individual libraries and then begin working with the district and the shop on what we can do to help bring up our buildings up to standard. So the ones that I talked about back in December that we have completed and now got the reports back, on our community survey, we got our reports for it from our vendor Orange Boy back in January, and we have taken the data that we got from them, we presented to management team, the raw data and the presentation, and then gave the raw data and the presentation also to all of our staff. And we began working to compile through that data and work through it and make some changes. A couple of examples I wanted to highlight was our Arts Communication Librarian took a look at our calendar of events and our software and how the patrons had given us feedback on some confusion they had in how we were labeling things, and she's completely redone how things are grouped together and categorized to better reflect what patrons want to see. In addition to that, she's also working with the rest of the Arts Communication Team to begin looking at creating a brand book for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Library so that we can better, across the board, working with the branches, present ourselves as one voice and one group on social media and better communicate that to our patrons, which is what we got back from the community survey. And I'll talk a little bit about a other action item here, a little bit that came directly from the survey, but it's also guiding us as an action committee in looking at how are we gonna address the strategic plan moving forward, particularly as we get into the budget talks that we have in these time periods until the end of the fiscal year, how we're gonna allocate budget monies and resources. We've begun to highlight a couple of different action items here in the plan. Looking at technology, we just recently went through a laptop refresh for our checkout laptops. We're looking at next fiscal year, potentially looking at more technology as that was what was asked from the community. In addition to that, also looking at how we provide translation and interpretation across the board, looking at the action items that deal directly with translation of programming, different programs that we offer, in addition to all of our signage and all of our written materials that we communicate to the community at large. The next one is, the final one is our security audit, which was completed by Chelsea Brown in December. We got that report back in February. We disseminated it to the individual branch managers, and we began to make changes based on that report. Two of the things that I would like to highlight is, we have begun working with our security camera vendor to update all of our security cameras, look at where we can add some to get better coverage, look at how we can reposition some of the ones that we already have. In addition, also working with KCK, PSPD, and the district in looking at LEO staffage, particularly at Main and West, where we can supplement some of them, add some more, and create more welcoming and safe space for our community. In addition to creating more welcoming space, one of the other action items that we got from the community survey was looking at our gender, or looking at our restrooms, particularly looking at the single occupancy restrooms that we had. All of our branches had them, so we looked at taking those, reviewing the signage, and making them more gender-inclusive and gender-neutral. That's currently underway. We've removed some of the signage for some of our branches, and we're waiting to complete some of the others. We anticipate that being done probably mid-April. But outside of that, that's all I've kind of got going on right now. We're still working on some of the training pieces, and then once we get all the information from the EDI audit and work with the DEI department here, we'll begin to like flush out next year some of the other patron-facing stuff. So, any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any questions from board members?
The Main Library.
Yes.
You look at the safety issue, it's a little different compared to the others.
Yes, and one thing that we have done to kind of start to help and give staff support on the front desk is we've moved one of our security officers from back, in the back, up to the front so that they are more visible as people come in. But we've also continued to have conversations with the district and the chief on LEO staffage, particularly at Main, because we do know that has been an issue, but those are ongoing conversations that we keep having with them.
And I said that, but I also want to commend them, because I go up there all the time, and I like how they work with people, and you're dealing a lot with mental illness, and you have, and I want to commend them for what they do, because they bend over backwards to help, to assist, and to treat people with dignity, even though some of them have some severe problems. So I'm always worried about their safety and what they have to contend with, but I want to commend them also for what they do.
Yep.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Additional questions?
Nope. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Thank you, Ms. Levers. Would entertain a motion to accept the library report and strategic planning update as presented.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item also with the library, it's recommended the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the proposed paid holidays and scheduled closings for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Library system, as submitted by Ms. Carol Levers, Executive Director of Libraries, and recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or further discussion?
I have, and forgive me, because they do get paid for Dr. King's holiday like everyone else, depending on what their day, their number of days schedule is.
Yes, all permanent, all full-time.
Okay.
Yeah, even part-time, but they get part-time.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Ms. Levers. Any additional questions? Seeing and hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next Agenda Items, Item Number 8, board. These items have come before the board in some manner previously and are up for potential action if it is the will of the board. First item on the agenda, it is recommended the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the Solution Tree PLC proposal as submitted by Dr. Judith Campbell, Deputy Superintendent, and is recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield, Superintendent of Schools.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Next item, it is recommended the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education accept the proposal for firewall appliance equipment, meeting the written requirements from Logicalis in the amount of $351,820.28 in accordance with the requirements of Board Policy DJED, as submitted by Mr. Wayne Carell, Director of Purchasing, Mr. Steve Lilly, Chief Operating Officer, and is recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you.
Next item, it's recommended the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education accept the proposal for local area network switch equipment, meeting the written requirements from Logicalis in the amount of $357,493.26 in accordance with the requirements of Board Policy DJED.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next Agenda Item, it is recommended the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education accept the bid for a new dishwashing machine for Washington High School from Edward Don and Company in the amount of $99,228.25 in accordance with the requirements of Board Policy DJED.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. The next Agenda Item, board, it is recommended that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education accept the quote for a new board table from Arnold Contract in the amount of $40,158.90 as submitted by Wayne Carell. As a reminder, board, this was asked, the board did ask administration to look into this item so that we could have proper spacing and room for all board members to sit up at the dais, including the staff that need to be up at the front, and that is being recommended and brought back forward for the board.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion?
How much bigger is this new table?
The new one seats nine, correct, Wayne?
It seats 11.
It seats eleven.
Eleven, but if you only do nine, you have more space.
So.
It, Wayne can.
A couple of feet, a couple of feet longer, Wayne, or?
Yeah, the quotation that was attached to the recommendation has a picture and.
Yes, it does.
It's a half donut shape.
I'm just curious, size-wise, how much bigger than this one?
It's gonna, I did this all the time. So it's gonna be essentially the same footprint, but it's gonna be a half donut shape.
Total curve.
That way, there'll be more space between you all. Mr. Clements has come in and he has measured the space and it'll fit perfectly.
Okay. I just want to make sure that it's gonna be big enough.
Yeah, it'll be big enough too.
Just justify the expense.
You know, provide privacy and it'll all, it'll be wired and have plugins on the top of the bench as well.
That way I can spread all my papers.
You can spread all, you can hide everything underneath too and it won't show up on the camera.
Okay. Thank you, Wayne.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Carell. Additional questions? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. I have lost connection to my.
Toilet partition.
Toilet partition.
Okay, sorry, it's just that.
Find it.
Yeah, but I've lost connection to my server here. Okay, sorry about that. Next agenda item, item number F, in accordance with the requirements of Board Policy DJED, bids were solicited from firms for demolition and replacement of existing toilet partitions at J.C. Harmon High School, Francis Willard, Arrowhead, John F. Kennedy Elementary, Emerson Elementary, Rose Dell Middle, John Fisk Elementary, Douglas Elementary, and Alfred Fairfax and Silver City Elementary. Those locations identified have toilet partitions that are in poor condition and replacement update is required. In most cases, these are partial replacements. The solicitation will include demolition and existing partitions, hallway, and installation. So it is recommended that we accept the bid for toilet partitions as presented?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. It's recommended that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the purchase for ambient holding cabinets from Edward Don and Company in the amount of $23,876.70 as submitted by Mr. Doug Clements, Mr. Steve Lilly, and Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next agenda item, item H, it is recommended that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education accept the proposal for athletic field improvements at Sumner Academy, meeting the written requirements from sprint turf in the amount of $2215,367 in accordance with the requirements of Board Policy DJED as submitted by Mr. Wayne Carell, Mr. Steve Lilly, and recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next agenda item, item nine, we are under new business board members. These are for informational purposes only, no action is being asked of the board at this time, but rather an opportunity for us to ask questions if there are any. So first up is under the solicitation for bids for the athletic field lighting for Sumner Academy. Any questions on this item? Okay, seeing none. We will continue on. The next item B, it is the solicitation for bids for the summer 2023 painting projects. Any questions there? No questions or, yes, Ms. Page.
When you say painting, we're painting the outside and in, or is it out or in?
Yeah, this is, hello, everybody.
Good evening.
This is gonna be for the interior painting of all the schools that are listening.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions on that item? Okay, seeing none. We'll continue on with item C. Any questions on the ByState Corridor Grant Opportunity? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you. We will continue with item D. Any questions on the professional development plan for T-Mobile Apple-connected devices? Seeing and hearing no questions or discussion. We will continue with item E.
I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Page.
I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Just, I didn't ask this in advance. I don't think I did, so I'm not asking for the answer right now. But will we train the parents? Remind me if there was a segment to help them as well.
Dr. Fernandez Flores is nodding her head yes, so we will, as a part of our curriculum nights and onboarding our parents, provide that support in a way for them to get ongoing support as the students transition. But remember, our K2 students already are on iPads, but some of them will be familiar with it, but now it will be K8, so yes, we'll be intentional about having some informational nights and resources for parents.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Sorry if I missed you, Ms. Page. Any additional questions? Okay. We'll continue on with item E. Any questions on the PSYOP Professional Development Plan and Model rollout? Okay, seeing none. Again, board, these are for information. There's plenty of information in board docs for you to review. I know it's a lot, so as questions come up, please make sure that you submit those to Dr. Stubblefield and we will get your questions, all of our questions answered. These may come forward at a future board meeting for potential action if it is the will of the board, but we just wanted to make sure that you were informed of these items and had an opportunity to ask questions. Okay, so before we get to the first board report, we're gonna take a quick five-minute recess to stretch your legs, seven-minute? We'll take a quick seven-minute recess, so if we could reconvene back in seven minutes at 6:22. Thank you. Thank you for allowing us a quick break. We're gonna go ahead and get back started with our agenda. Thanks for allowing us a small break to stretch our legs. So our next agenda item, item number 10, tonight, board, we have the opportunity to hear our academic and discipline data, so I'd invite Dr. Judith Campbell to the podium. Good evening, Dr. Campbell, and thanks for joining us.
All right, good evening. Good evening, Board President Lopez, Vice President Yolanda Clark, all board members, Dr. Stubblefield, our staff and audience and participating audience via Zoom. I am Dr. Judith Campbell, Deputy Superintendent of KCKPS, and tonight with the insight and support of our leadership and learning team, that includes our Department of Data Evaluation, Research, and Assessment, I will be providing a comparative overview of our 22-23 Fast Bridge Academic Data, ACT and Dual-Credit Enrollment Attendance and Disciplinary Data that expands on our student-focused framework around the goal created, creating an environment for learning and success for all KCKPS students. Gonna go back one. So we love to start with our Sphere of Influence, also known as our Vertical Grounding Model. As this image keeps centered around the support each school and department provides, aligned to our district strategic plan KISA, as we focus on the North Star goal of ensuring 100% of our students who are graduating with a diploma plus credential have it with no disparities around race or gender subgroups. We also like to include our 22-23 focus areas. This year, we have been intentional as a leadership and learning team about adhering to these three priorities in all areas that include a portion of the data points that will be shared upon this evening. We will drill down on three areas, academic, college career readiness, attendance, and discipline data. The data in subgroups that you will see during the fourth quarter data report will be common assessment data. That will include our additional subgroups that include our ESOL and also our SPED subgroups. However, in this Fast Bridge data, please note that that information will be embedded in what you will see on this evening. As we're looking at the overall fall versus our winter information, the levels in which our Fast Bridge academic data is reviewed consist of four achievement levels, which are defined as college pathway, meaning very likely to meet grade level goals, low risk, likely to meet grade level goals, some risk, unlikely to meet grade level goals, and high risk, very unlikely to meet grade level goals. This data will provide a comparison from fall 2022 to winter of 2023 using our district assessment screener, Fast Bridge for ELA in math. Early reading is the assessment tool for early childhood and kindergarten students, while A-reading captures assessment data for our first through 12th grade students. As we move forward, please note that early math is an assessment tool for our early childhood, kindergarten, and skill components for first grade students, while A-math captures other components of first through 12th grade students. Overall, early reading displays here that from fall to winter, about 3% more of our early learners entered high risk, while about 7% of our early learners moved out of some risk to low risk. A-reading displays that 2% of students moved from high risk from fall to winter, while low risk and college pathway stayed about the same. By grade, early reading displays from fall to winter that 14% of kindergarten students moved from high or some risk to low risk or better, and 1% of first grade students moved from some risk or high risk. A-reading displays that from second to 12th grade, seven of these 11 grade levels moved from high risk or some risk to low risk or better. Seven races or ethnicities were captured on this slide that consist of American Indian or Alaska Native, Asian, Black or African American, Hispanic or Latina, multiracial, Native Hawaiian or specific Islander, and white. Early reading displays from fall to winter that all races or ethnicities in early reading moved from high or some risk to low or better. A-reading displays that five of the seven races or ethnicities percentages increased from fall to winter to high to some risk, and two races or ethnicities moved from high or some risk to low risk or better. We are entering our Fast Bridge math. Let me go back one, excuse me. Overall, early math displays that from fall to winter, about 2% more of our early learners moved from low risk to some risk or high risk, while A-reading displays the margins being rounded that students stayed around the same levels from fall to winter. Early math displays from fall to winter that 1% of kindergarten students moved from some risk or high risk, and 5% of first grade students moved from low risk to some risk or high risk. A-math displays that second through 12th grade students, that five of, excuse me, that five of these 11 grade levels moved from high risk or some risk to low risk or better. ensure coaching is connected to student outcomes, and reviewing recommendations for the 23-24 school year that comes from our student and staff interviews that was conducted by Hanover Research. College and Career Readiness, ACT and Dual-Credit Enrollment. When you look at this line graph, for ACT, we show that the performance trends continue to increase from the 2018 to the 2023 school year. However, please note that due to our testing window just getting complete, that our current numbers displayed here that shows 319 is what we have that has been brought in so far. But if you look at the line graph and look at the trend, we're trending in the right direction. This slide just provides another view of trend performance by content, which shows an incline from the 2021 school year to our current school year. This graph displays the approximate number of students by our seven races that I spoke about earlier that have taken the ACT assessment this year. From 2019 to 2022, we showed significant declines in students obtaining a KCK/CC Tech certification. However, as of date, we have increased the overall number of students obtaining this certification, as you see displayed here. As we look at attendance, the area of attendance that we will review will be the average daily attendance and chronic absenteeism. Our current daily attendance rate is 90.55%, and our chronic absenteeism rate is 34.3%. This graph displays that over the last three years, we have lowered our percentage in chronically absent students. Of the seven races or ethnicities captured, and specifically looking at 2022 school year through the 2023 school year, four of the seven races or ethnicities have increased their overall daily attendance rate. Of the seven races and ethnicities captured here, specifically looking again at the 22, 2022 through the 2023 school year, one of the seven races or ethnicities have increased their chronically absentee rates. Of our ESOL student group captured, specifically looking at the 2022-2023 school years, the average daily attendance rate has not displayed a substantial increase. However, this group is above the 90% daily rate. Of our ESOL student group captured here, specifically again looking at 22-23 school year, the average daily attendance rate shows a decline related to this group of students being chronically absent, which, as it relates to chronic absenteeism, a decline is exactly what we're looking for. Of our SPED group captured, and specifically looking at our 22-23 school year, the average daily attendance rate shows a slight decline related to this group of students' daily attendance rate. Of our SPED group captured here, specifically again the 22-23 school year, chronic absenteeism rates show a decline related to this group of students being chronically absent, again, is what we're looking for as it relates to our students being chronically absent. Specifically to this area, looking at going back just one more year, the 2021 through the 2023 average, we see an increase in our elementary and high school students' attendance rates. Looking at this, the school group around chronic absenteeism, specifically around 22 and 23 school year, we see a decline at our elementary and high schools. We will be moving into our discipline data. And this slide here just shows the top 10 behavior incidents, with the top three being skipping class, gross disruptive behavior, and defiance of authority or gross disrespect. This line, this slide displays the number of incidents and number of students involved in incidents. Early in the year, we had more repeat offenders. But as you can see in this live graph, we show here a significant decline in our incidents by month. Typically, we look at all big, big five areas, but today, we'll specifically look at when and where the discipline incidents are taking place. They are taking place typically on Tuesday and Thursday, as you look here. There's just a higher level of incidents that take place there. And then, when we look at where they are happening at, the classroom is the highest, along with our hallways and stairwell. And people will ask, well, what is going on in the classroom that there is so much taking place and around incidents? Our kids spend majority of their time in the classroom, so it's not because there is something out of the ordinary taking place. But when you look at data, you have to be able to analyze and determine what, what is taking place. And our kids do spend most of their time in the classroom setting. This is the average by month, and about one incident per building takes place based upon this graph. This graph displays the incidents by year and month that shows an average ranging from, our numbers ranging from 2019 to 2023. And just looking at by each month, that kind of follows the line graph that was displayed earlier. It matches around the incidents. This graph here just gives you specific numbers. The incidents by school level, again, another view, looking at it by the month and school level of our elementary, high, and middle school students. And as we look at these incidents by school level and year, there is an overall increase in elementary. However, there is a decline in middle and high school behaviors. Looking at our suspension level by the year, there is an overall decrease. So, we are landing at, you shared this information, now what? What are our next steps? We are going to continue to dive into those evidence-based instructional practices around the new curriculum adoptions that have taken place. Letters is one that we will continue. We have two cohorts that we are supporting at this time that consists of all of our teachers in the district. We are showing that this program is moving our students in the right direction around reading. We will continue with DigiCoach to give that immediate direct feedback and that customized feedback for our teachers, and that allowing not only our administrators and coaches to get in classrooms and support, but also at the district level and the Leadership and Learning Team specifically to get into those classrooms and provide support. We will be offering the PLC training, and we will be expecting PLC to continue district-wide at every building at least once a week, so that the purpose is looking at the data to inform and drive our instruction within our classrooms. We also will offer our Summer Summit for teachers and staff to sign up for to get additional professional development. And we will be continuing to outline professional development at all tiered level, even at district administration. So, I kind of want to close out with this, because again, I just dumped a lot of information in front of you. But as we look at the small incremental gains and recognize we still have some work to do, I want to, this quote has been inspired by Samare Yachuri, "Education mirrors the image of a triangle consisting of quantity, quality, and equity. You can't just ignore one while strengthening the others. However, you can go slow to go fast as you work to create systems and opportunities that support the best outcomes for all children, individually and collectively." And so, that is the work that we will continue to do and that we are committed to doing as a Leadership and Learning Team, as Kansas City Kansas Public Schools is working to go slow to go fast, so that we can improve the outcome of our students. Thank you, and what questions do you have?
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. A lot of really great information for us to dive into. Board will have an opportunity to ask questions at this moment. I did just want to share anecdotally about a month ago, as I was coming in for a meeting here at District Office, I got stopped by an employee in the parking lot, and she just wanted to share that, that what we're doing with early reading and, and reading initiatives with all of our students is working, and that we need to be patient, and that we need to be consistent. And, and I think you'll find that, as you've, you've spoken to today, the data's showing it. It's slow, but it's growing, and it's improving. And so, I think, I just wanted to share that because it's, you know, you often hear of, of some of the challenges, but it's, it's nice to hear from staff who are doing the work every day that, when they come to you and say, hey, let's keep, let's keep moving forward, let's keep doing this because it's working. So, I just wanted to share that. Again, and I'm going to steal something from Ms. Clark. I'm going to credit you. But I also think, you know, how do we celebrate and share these, these metrics and these gains where we do see improvements? I think, you know, we, we want to continue to share, in a conversation that I was in with Ms. Clark and Ms. Page yesterday, with the three of us, and the two of them specifically talked about, how do we lift up those improvements and share with our community in a way where they can see it and understand what these gains mean? You know, and, and we do a great job as a district of communicating a lot of what's going on in our district. But how do we continue to share these, these gains that we're seeing and that we shared tonight? So, just kudos to you and the team for, for the work that, that we're all doing, that we're all in together. But, but thank you for sharing a lot of information. Board members, what questions would you have to share tonight?
Before your questions, I do just want to point out, because I did get a question about the data when it's comparing year to year. We are in March, we haven't completed the year, but the data is trending in the right direction. But those, where it says it shows the year is the full year, and we're just comparing the full year to March to this point in time.
Dr. Stubblefield, to that, because I was thinking when we were looking here, what should we take in consideration for that year that students were not necessarily in the building? So, when we're looking at this data, certain, like, what is that, 2021?
2021. It was the 2020-21, like, it was fall 20 into spring of 2021, they came back in March.
Okay.
That was the year that they spent most of the year out. And then, in 2020, it was the last quarter that they were not in. So, that also impacts the data when you look, when you look at it in a year.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I did keep that in mind. Thank you. While I'm speaking, do you mind if I continue on? Thank you for your presentation tonight. Very, very helpful. I have, I just have one question, or I have two questions. One of them, when you talk about the walkthroughs in DigiCoach.
DigiCoach, thank you. I remember that being approved. So, it sounds like it's working. It's the way you thought it would work, and you're seeing great benefit there, based upon what I've seen tonight? Yes, based upon the data. And again, we went slow to go fast. So, engagement, first we had to see how our students were engaged in the classroom. So, we spent a lot of time at district level. Now, building administrators would select multiple areas, but as we entered and brought this program onboard, it was spring of last year, we looked at two of the criteria areas over the six. And then, we are now looking at the full matrix. And our administrators are doing an amazing job visiting those classrooms regularly. When we look at that data, it has significantly changed. And our, our teachers are also sharing the, how they are very pleased with the feedback and information that they are getting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My next question, and I'm not necessarily asking for an answer, but it's just something I thought about. I know our schools are very busy, and our students are very busy, and sometimes it's, you're not able to capture everything that you may see as a concern for our students, or whatever the case may be. And so, what I'm wondering is, is there ever a time when our teachers are able to talk about maybe activities that they're seeing in the building that maybe don't make the numbers, but there are concerns or thoughts that our staff have regarding activities with our students? Does that make sense? So, it may not be documented anywhere, but it may be something they address, or they had, they were, had visibility into. And so, I just want to make sure that they have that platform to be able to speak to things that they're seeing in the building as well.
So, would that relate to probably our climate and culture survey?
That's one area that it may show up. It also may show up during their PLC meetings. They're, when they're looking at their data and talking about things, they may, during those meetings, talk about some, like, why is this data doing this? So, it may come there. And when, they're building leaders here, but they all have spaces, like with their leadership team, that those types of things that come up that may not be being captured, that they can bring to our attention. But between their, the climate surveys and their PLCs, some of that thing, some of those conversations, depending on what you're referring to, will be coming up.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Page?
Yeah. When will the climate survey information come out?
So, I actually just spoke to a couple of Board members. The, all the principals have shared them with their staff. I will be sending it to you. I'm actually waiting for Dr. Conrad to get back in town, so that we can figure out what's the best way to give you access to the data, so that you can see it for each school first semester. And then, I mean, from the fall. And then, we'll do another survey later in the spring. And again, the principals will review that and share the high-level trends. And they do goal-setting with their staff to address some of the things that are coming up, and then we'll share that with you as well. So...
Before the year is out?
Yeah. I'll share one either, probably by next week. I'm, we're just trying to decide what's the best way to give you access to all of the buildings from the fall survey.
And, and it's not a question, it's just a comment. And we've talked. I, I mentioned this to both of you, but I wanted people publicly to know that I did say it, and that you all were going to work on, maybe how we can get more tutoring on the elementary level?
Yes.
I know sometimes the, the school...
this program onboard, it was spring of last year, we looked at two of the criteria areas over the six, and then we are now looking at the full matrix. And our administrators are doing an amazing job visiting those classrooms regularly. When we look at that data, it has significantly changed and our teachers are also sharing how they are very pleased with the feedback and information that they are getting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My next question, and I'm not necessarily asking for an answer, but it's just something I thought about. I know our schools are very busy and our students are very busy and sometimes you're not able to capture everything that you may see as a concern for our students or whatever the case may be. And so what I'm wondering is, is there ever a time when our teachers are able to talk about maybe activities that they're seeing in the building that maybe don't make the numbers, but there are concerns or thoughts that our staff have regarding activities with our students? Does that make sense? So it may not be documented anywhere, but it may be something they address or they had, they were, had visibility into. And so I just want to make sure that they have that platform to be able to speak to things that they're seeing in the building as well.
So would that relate to probably our climate and culture survey?
That's one area that it may show up. It also may show up during their PLC meetings, when they're looking at their data and talking about things. They may, during those meetings, talk about some, like, why is this data doing this? So it may come there. And when, they're building leaders here, but they all have spaces, like with their leadership team, that those types of things that come up that may not be being captured that they can bring to our attention. But between their, the climate surveys and their PLCs, some of that thing, some of those conversations, depending on what you're referring to, will be coming up.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Page?
Yeah. When will the climate survey information come out?
So, I actually just spoke to a couple of board members. All the principals have shared them with their staff. I will be sending it to you. I'm actually waiting for Dr. Conrad to get back in town so that we can figure out what's the best way to give you access to the data so that you can see it for each school for semester. And then, I mean, from the fall, and then we'll do another survey later in the spring. And again, the principals will review that and share the high-level trends. And they do goal-setting with their staff to address some of the things that are coming up, and then we'll share that with you as well.
Before the year is out?
Yeah, I'll share one either, probably by next week. We're just trying to decide what's the best way to give you access to all of the buildings from the fall survey.
And it's not a question, it's just a comment. And we've talked, I mentioned this to both of you, but I wanted people publicly to know that I did say it and that you all were going to work on maybe how we can get more tutoring on the elementary level.
Yes.
I know sometimes the school can't necessarily do it, but what can we incorporate to help parents with their kids and give them some strategies, some structures, so they can help them as well?
Yeah, so we've had the opportunity to expand on proximity learning, who is providing the tutoring support for our elementary students that has started this spring.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Additional questions? Okay, seeing none tonight. Thank you, Dr. Campbell, to you and your entire team for helping to put this information together. Board, if there are questions that come up, there was a lot of data to go through, so please make sure you continue to look through that, ask questions. And I know staff is happy to answer and have conversations about any of the questions you might have. So please make sure you share any questions that you might have. Our next report comes from the Department of Student and Support Programs. And so I see we have Tracy Chauvin with us. Good evening, thank you for joining us.
Good evening. Thank you guys so much for having me tonight. Good afternoon, good evening, Board President Lopez, board members, Dr. Stubblefield, and everyone in the audience on Zoom. Thank you guys so much for giving me the opportunity. I'm excited to be here today to share with you the work being done within the Department of Student Support Programs. I would like for any of our leadership team who are here to please stand and be recognized. I believe we have a couple of our leadership, yeah, Angela, stand up. Yay! We have such a vast team who works to support the entire district, the community, our families, and so I want to recognize them for the hard work that they do and thank you guys for being here tonight with us. This evening, I will be providing updates on the programs I have been privileged to provide leadership to since July of last year. Those programs are highlighted in blue. Tonight, you'll be hearing an overview of each program, current impacts and wins, and then next steps for each individual program. Our Attend to Achieve program works to raise attendance awareness within not only our school communities, but also within our larger KCKPS community. They do this through equipping all schools with tools necessary to address chronic absenteeism within each school community, partnering with buildings to provide tiered interventions of support that will create sustaining relationships between schools, families, and communities. Some impacts and wins, let's celebrate. As the Attend to Achieve program has been built out, the need for reorganization occurred. The Attend to Achieve program now has an identified coordinator as the leader of the work and the data specialist position was shifted into a program and prevention specialist, role that will focus on supporting our secondary schools. As we have continued our deeply collaborative partnership with Attendance Works and Red Apple Co., there's been a paradigm shift that has occurred that ensures that all have a mindset of prevention versus reaction when it comes to engaging our parents and our community around attendance. There's a huge focus on proactive support and relationship building in order to increase that attendance as well. The 20 schools in that cohort, in this community of practice, receive bimonthly professional development, individualized coaching, and personal guidance. The other many wins of our Attend to Achieve team include a strong attendance team in every building supported through an attendance plan, a data dashboard that was developed that now has regular use to track attendance and chronic absenteeism, creation of an attendance guide for our staff, monthly professional development for our attendance clerks district-wide. We also have the development and creation of Attendance 101, which is a one option schools can use as a school-based attendance intervention for parents and students. The Attend to Achieve social worker comes to your building to facilitate one session as a train the trainer, and then from there, the building staff are able to implement Attendance 101 in their school site on their own. The Attend to Achieve team also participates around our community in five community events and over 15 individual school events in the fall semester alone. Where are we going next? We're going to continue to build out that, on our successes and wins this year through a more professional development. We need to continue to build that capacity within to be able to support that chronic absenteeism, looking at that data through a variety of ways. Those attendance teams, meetings through our meetings with our principals, and then also providing and coaching support during that. The Department of Student Support Programs works collaboratively to ensure that there is a robust interconnected network of support available throughout our entire school communities in order to increase academic, social, emotional, and post-secondary success. We do this through school prevention programming. We've had a lot of impacts and wins within our school prevention program, programming this year as we build that interconnected network of support. This year has been spent intentionally expanding established partnerships and then creating new partnerships to support students across the district. One large impact and win is the Enough is Enough Impact Plan led by Brittany Tally and Naomi Talantino. This plan included representation of the Enough is Enough Advisory Committee and students at the Back to School Fair, hosting two community resource fairs, one of which had a little more power than others, but both very impactful, hosting a youth leadership summit, and the development of a youth advisory board within each of our high schools. We also have a continued partnership with First Call that is deepened. First Call is the Prevention Resource Center for our region. It's deepened this year so that we have the Life Skills Program across all of our fifth and sixth grades district-wide, in addition to the programming occurring at Alfred Fairfax Academy and the collaboration with our PACT program. We continue to have communities and schools within the three schools listed. We now have a partnership with the Youth Guidance in the schools that are listed to bring the BAM and WOW programs, which are school-based group counseling programs that teach students to internalize and practice social cognitive skills. Additionally, we have our PACT program, which has served 36 students in a partnership with the KCKPS PD to provide more prevention services as well around that PACT program. And members of our Student Support Program Team act in various state and local community groups, such as the KSDE School and Health Advisory Council and the Youth Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, which allow for not only advocacy work within those networks, but also for connections to be made that are brought back to our KCKPS community. Where are we going from here? We are going to intentionally work to integrate that mission of Enough is Enough into all we do, to create that interconnected system of support and prevention through engaging our schools, our students, our caregivers in our community, and activities that are proactive and preventative in nature. This will be done through a long-range implementation plan for Enough is Enough, expanding those youth advisory boards within to our middle schools, continuing to expand in partnerships for new opportunities for our students and parents, ensuring that there is an intentional plan for First Call to occur next year as well within our fifth and sixth grades, and the restructuring of our PACT program in order to provide prevention in addition to our current programming. An additional layer of support is that of our Behavioral Health Program, which provides prevention, intervention, and clinical services by bringing together schools and community resources to develop a continuum of services that enable our students to have their educational and mental health needs met. Our 62 social workers are licensed master-level social workers with training in mental health and crisis intervention. Our impacts and wins in our robust behavioral health program are huge. They encompass many activities which impact our students and our families greatly. In place, we have community partnership with PACES and five individual mental health practitioners to provide therapy in our schools. Three of the five mental health providers serve students who are uninsured, and three of the five are Spanish-speaking. Additionally, we have the KCKPS Care Clinic, which provides therapy services at Schlegel and Harmon, working to fill that gap we are seeing in the services available through our local mental health agencies. To date this year, there have been 476 elementary, 477 middle, and 340 high school students referred to the care clinic. Resources such as Giving the Basics are available, and you can see that we've served nearly 1,000 students and family with these essential items. Our behavioral health social workers embedded in our schools, this is a huge one, by having these behavioral health social workers embedded in our schools, we are saving lives. Our behavioral health social workers have provided over 780,000 minutes of support to students thus far during this school year, and they've completed almost 400 suicide risk assessments to date this school year. We provide targeted professional development to these professionals, to our behavioral health social workers, some of which is focused on the new evidence-based resources that have been provided this school year. And members of our Behavioral Health Program frequently participate in community events and advocacy work, such as Angela Dunn, our Coordinator of Behavioral Health, speaking on the Community Resource Panel at the Enough is Enough event. School Behavioral Health Next Steps. Next steps for this Behavioral Health Program include providing support to students and families through our extended summer learning, continued training and support for the behavioral health social workers through resources and professional development, continued coaching and support to teams to support that paradigm shift occurring of prevention-focused social, emotional wellness through a continuum of care, continued analysis of our procedures and resources so that we are providing systems and guidance that's up-to-date, evidence-based, and easy to use for our staff. We will also continue to educate and advocate on the importance of mental health resources and supports within our schools to ensure that our KCKPS students have what they need to not only survive, but thrive in school and beyond. Another layer of support, which provides prevention, intervention, community resources to develop a continuum of services that enable our students to have their educational mental health needs met, includes our social, emotional, learning, and professional school counseling program. Our 67 professional school counselors also have master's degrees, but theirs are in school counseling, making them uniquely qualified to address the student's academics, personal, social, and career development needs. Like all of our other program, and we have a lot of wins, there's a really, really big one that we want to celebrate. We have earned the Copper Distinction on the Kansas Can Star Recognition Program for social, emotional growth for this past school year. That encompasses all the hard work that's been talked about in all of our board meetings because it really shows that when we are able to equip our students with the social, emotional skills that they need when we put those frameworks in place, that we move the needle on student outcomes. So, moving even deeper into the results and impacts that we've seen through the frameworks we've put into place, we have also seen that our Kansas Community that Cares survey results show positive trends with selected indicators showing an increase in positive responses between 7 and 24% from this school year to the year prior. So our students are telling us that they have relationships. It's a huge impact and a huge win. Our students feel safe and comfortable in our schools. We've also provided targeted professional development through co-leading an impact course on high-impact trauma-sensitive strategies, leading a summer summit on facilitating the brain architecture game. Additionally, I like to show, so we have pictures as well, you guys, so that you can see what this looks like in action. We have morning meetings across our district in grade levels K through 5. We provided the first six weeks of school and morning meeting book by the responsive classrooms and built time into our elementary master schedules for that building of relationship bonds and connection and practicing of social, emotional skills. We have monthly counselor professional development focusing on the needs identified by the professional school counselors themselves, happening monthly. We've continued universal awareness campaigns such as Bullying Prevention Month and then Unity Day. We are also having our KCKPS staff be seen as leaders in the field, presenting at national and state-level conferences, such as the Attachment and Trauma Networks Creating Trauma Sensitive Schools Conference, ESDEX Bridging to Resilience Conference, and KSDE's Safe and Supportive Schools Conference. We've also had a continued partnership with MTSS, DEI, CNI, all the people to continue to put that embedded trauma-sensitive SEL MTSS framework into place. To date this year, we have co-led four of those trainings with one of them being Today to all of our school teams. Moving into our next steps. As we move forward with continuing to shore up our SEL framework through developing a long-range SEL Impact Plan, this would include increasing the resources available to our professional school counselors, continuing professional development, continued professional development through the entire system, including with our monthly professional school counselor professional development, our partnerships to support that trauma-sensitive SEL MTSS implementation, and then engaging the community in universal prevention related to social, emotional learning as well, supporting summer learning with morning meetings and class meeting implementation. And a really large one is applying for the Star Recognition Program again this year because we're aiming for gold always. The McKinney-Vento Program. Another large area of support for our community is the McKinney-Vento Program. The McKinney-Vento Program, or the McKinney-Vento Act provides rights and services to children and youth experiencing homelessness. We currently serve over 250 individual families and have more than 450 students through McKinney-Vento Program at this time. We've had some really large impacts and wins within our McKinney-Vento Program. These milestones include the expansion to two program specialists, Lenisha Huggins and Vanessa Moran, who support Washington Schlegel, Alfred Fairfax Academy, Harmon, and Sumner, providing direct assistance through holiday support, prom dress shopping, and cold weather items, being a visible presence at events such as the Enough is Enough programming, resource fairs, and individual building professional development to increase awareness and advocate for supports for our students. We want to continue to build this program out and grow and expand our McKinney-Vento Program to support our families and our community. We want to do this through enhancing opportunities for caregiver empowerment, providing case management for unaccompanied-in-high-school McKinney-Vento youth in order to reduce the very specific barriers that these youth face and also increase their knowledge of the resources and opportunities available, create a data-informed program that supports our students through the whole child framework, and work with our KCKPS Community Engagement Educator and Government Relations Staff and continue to serve on the crosslines in Greater Kansas City Coalition and homelessness boards so that we can advocate and help the community to make informed decisions around our McKinney-Vento students and their families and their needs. For the Department of Student Support Programs overall, you heard these three goals already from Lederick Collins, our Assistant Director, but we are going to build out our strategic plan for student support programs, continue our professional development for the entire system, expand partnerships and pathways to provide an impactful and larger network of support to our students. The program shared with you tonight focuses on the whole child from elementary through high school. That focus is on ensuring that students are socially, emotionally well so that they can be well in all areas of their life, graduating diploma plus. The Department of Student Support Programs is ensuring that professional development and expanding our partnerships are cornerstones of our programming to positively impact not just our students, but our KCKPS community as well. What questions do you have for me?
Thank you, Ms. Chauvin, for that information. There was a lot there as well. To you and your entire team, thank you all for the great work you're doing. Would open up the floor for the board for any questions?
I'd just like to say that when I looked at all of this, I was greatly impressed with everything that you have that's a part of this, particularly with the Attend to Achieve. Excellent way.
An amazing team.
Right.
An amazing team doing great work.
Right, as well as, you know, Enough is Enough. I think we're on the right path. One of my main concerns is how engaging are parents with this entire grouping? Are they actively involved?
That's a very valid question and point. I think that we're still in an area of growth in that aspect as we continue to look at the best ways to engage our caregivers and our family members. But one of the ways in which they're doing that is through being certain and sure that they're in the buildings during their parent night so that they're having that visibility so that parents feel more comfortable coming to our larger events such as our Enough is Enough. Because if they don't see us, they don't know us, and they might be afraid to come to us. And so we really want to reduce that maybe shame, blame, or stigma that might be associated with coming to school events for help or being, oh, involved with the Attend to Achieve team. So we're still in that paradigm shift of moving into proactive, relationship-based, and so that is 100% the work that they're doing with our buildings as well in terms of being there, being present, building relationships with all.
Thank you. And I think that's very important and because I don't expect for them to come immediately because I know it's going to take some time. But I would also recommend that when you do your presentation, make a comment about that.
Thank you. Thank you for that feedback.
Excellently presented.
Thank you, Ms. Drew. Additional questions? Yes, Ms. Page?
You hit on a key word that kind of keeps running through my mind when you said, if they don't see us, the diversity, they need to see that. And I'm not saying, you know, we have some, but we need more. And you got to, we need to figure out a way. How do we get more minority males involved so these young men can see minority males? Not to say that women can't do it because they see women all the time, but they need to see themselves as well as the girls, whether they're Asian, black, white, what have you. They need to see themselves and they need to see the diversity. So we need to pull some people in from, how do we get the community involved? Ms. Drew talked about parents. I'm saying community because we need the male factor involved in these kids' lives. If we can find men who are willing, if they've gone through the scrutiny, what have you, to come up. Something simple as to come up and have lunch with someone. I saw a program on television where the barbers had a session with kids and how just coming to the barber shop to talk with other men, how some boys said, I didn't come for the haircut, I just needed to see a man who looks like me. And it may not mean much to some, but it means a lot to our kids. They need to see themselves. And I don't know if it's your department, but we got to figure out a way, maybe to get some of these kids a job. That would help for some because then they can put the connection together. I'm working because I want to get this job, I need this, I need that, whatever internships we can put together to help them, to inspire them.
Thank you so much for that. Thank you, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Additional comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Chauvin. Thank you, Ms. Chauvin. Again, board, I know that was a lot of information that we just covered in both of those reports. And I just want to make sure that as a board, you know, that we do take our time to diligently dive into the data, dive into the reports that were given to us, and know that there is a lot going on within each of these departments. There's a lot happening in our schools, in our community. In order to get these reports and, you know, a thirty-minute presentation, there are so many hundreds of hours being put into this work. And it's just so important to recognize, and these two reports that we received tonight, just hugely important to moving us in the right direction academically to make sure that we're hitting those metrics that we're setting out as a board. And then, the social emotional side and the other work that the student and support programs department is working through, there's just so much depth in there. I'd invite you and encourage you as board members, if you haven't had the opportunity, to take time and meet with LaDerek, meet with Tracy, meet with Dr. Campbell, with Kness, meet with these individuals, with Ms. Angela Dunn, meet with them and talk to them to get to know the things that maybe we can't hear in a thirty-minute presentation and find the time to ask some of those questions that I know we have, that we may not be able to dive into in a regular board meeting. But so much depth being put in behind both of the reports that we heard tonight, so much great information, so many great things happening, so many, so much progress we're seeing in some of our academic data as well. We just need to dive into it a bit more. So, I'd encourage you all, I say all of that just because, again, I know, I see how much work has been put in by all of our staff to bring these reports forward. So, would just encourage you to, if you haven't had the chance, go out, reach out, and have a conversation one-on-one with folks. I'll get off my soapbox now. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, staff, for that, for those two great reports. Again, board, please submit questions as you have them as we move forward. Our next agenda item, board, agenda item eleven. Board, if you recall, this was an item that came before us a couple of months ago or a few board meetings ago around the lending of one of our, or a couple of our paintings that we have here at Central Office. And at the time, we tabled it, this discussion, to give Mr. Goheen and staff an opportunity to do a little bit of research around what does it take to loan out artwork and what are some things that we should be thinking of and whether we should develop some policy or what policies do we have in place. So, that conversation was tabled until today for today's meeting, so it's back before you so that we can continue the discussion. We don't have to make any decisions regarding whether we want to loan out the painting or not, or the paint, the artwork or not today, but at some point, we will need to move forward and give the artist or the curator an answer. But I know Mr. Goheen and Dr. Stubblefield have brought some information for us today, so I'll hand it off to Dr. Stubblefield.
And I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Goheen so he can address the motion that was placed and what needs to happen with that if the board is not going to move on the motion. But then, also, he can just tell you about the documents that are attached that were requested.
Yeah, and as I recall, and I don't have it specifically in front of me, but I think we had a pending motion when we left off on this last, we may have to address that. Before we get to that point, let me kind of walk through what we gave to the board here as informational items so you guys can kind of have some understanding of what you may or may not want to do. A couple of different things. One, we took a look at the current board policy on loaning personal property that the school district owns. And it's kind of interesting, we don't have the same policy KSB has. KSB has, their model policy is a broader policy. Ours is very reduced down to make it clear that the only loan of personal property that this board has authorized is at the express permission of the superintendent to personnel for the district. So, we don't loan out personal property to community groups or to individuals for personal use other than with that one caveat. And it took me a minute to remember some of the recollection as to why that took place, but what had happened was, at one point in time, you did have the broader policy by KSB. There was some equipment, as I recall, that was borrowed out or loaned out that was not returned. And at that point, the school district made the decision, this board, your predecessors on this board, made the decision that personal property was not going to be loaned out. And this was, as I recall, it was food service items that were loaned out in that particular situation. They were loaned out in connection with the use of one of the district properties and then I believe that some of the items did not return, and so, the district had to replace them. And the discussion at the time was, it didn't really make sense to be loaning out personal property that the district owned to patrons of the school district or to members of the community just as a general premise because those are items that were purchased for use by our schools, for our students, and should not be placed in a situation where they could be used as personal items by individuals or whatever that might be. There was some caveat that was left at that time, otherwise, you would have just completely withdrawn that policy, and that's why you don't have all the other language in that policy. So, the only caveat that was left was there might be certain circumstances where you might want to allow a employee of the school district who makes a request to have an opportunity to borrow something. That's a long-winded way of saying, if you want to change that policy or look at that, you certainly could. I don't think that you have to change that policy if you decide you want to loan this particular piece of artwork out to this agency or organization. It's just your policies don't cover this kind of loan arrangement as they currently exist. So, if you decide you're going to loan it out, I think you would do so with the use of a loan agreement. You've got a drafted one that is put together that we sampled from a loan arrangement that actually your library did a number of years ago when they were loaning some materials out. The library does loan personal materials out, obviously, that's kind of what libraries do. And this related to some specific artwork that was being displayed at the library in connection with some programming. So, that's sort of where the core of that agreement came from, or at least the revisions that I made to the agreement came from. So, if you're going to head down this path, the recommendation would be that you have some version of that type of agreement that requires the insurance of the artwork, the, you know, from the wall here to the location it's going to be at, the individual or the organization taking it would be responsible for insuring it, wrapping it, delivering it, transporting it, all costs, all liability for damages to the property during the time it's in use by that other agency. So, that's kind of what we've put together here. And I'm using my opportunity to talk about this in the context of discussions relates to what I believe was still a pending motion. So, you'd either have to vote the last motion up or down or withdraw it before you would move on from there, but I believe it was tabled to this meeting, as I recall.
Thank you, Mr. Goheen. Do we remember, I believe the motion actually was to not...
I believe the motion was to not loan it.
There was a second to that.
That is my recollection as well. And so, that was the motion that was pending. There would even need to be a vote on that, one way or the other, or you could withdraw it and do something different, but, you know, the cleanest way is probably to have a vote. And then, if you wanted to make a second motion, you could do that.
So, I know there's a motion and a second on the floor that's being, as Mr. Goheen mentioned, that we have to take up tonight. So, I'd open up for discussion or questions around what Mr. Goheen shared or the motion that's in place. Again, the motion is to not loan the paintings as they were requested. So, I'd open the floor up for any questions or discussion. Yes, Ms. Humphries?
So, if we vote yes on this motion, it says we don't want to loan it. If we vote no, it means we want, we may want to loan it.
It means we may, yeah, it doesn't necessarily mean that we will loan it, but that...
If you vote yes on the motion, then the result would be that you would not be loaning the artwork out. If you vote yes on it, right, I'm sorry, if you vote no on it, the motion just dies and then it doesn't prevent you from making another motion or doing something different.
Just want to make sure I vote the right way.
I feel like we should allow ourselves to be able to loan it out, but to, with the suggestion of the draft and loan agreement, to have that presented and signed so that they will be held accountable for everything that relates to transporting it, protecting it, and then making sure that it comes back, and of course, the cost for them to be able to get it.
Thank you, Ms. Drew. Other?
I actually agree with Ms. Page, and I should have written it down, so I'm public about my stance. Then, my vote to this, to the motion on the floor that we have right now would be yes. To not loan.
If you do not want to loan it, then you would vote yes.
And I would say no. Okay.
And I agree with Ms. Clark because I know I made the motion not to loan it, but because we're missing two people, I would rather do it with a full board and make sure, I appreciate what you did, Mr. Goheen. You gave us the loan agreement form, and we have that to give everybody time to look at it, but at least make sure everybody's here and they're able to participate.
I definitely agree with that, Ms. Page, as well. I definitely do, especially with the amount of dollars and the liability of putting on the board.
I can withdraw it.
Yeah, I don't remember who seconded the motion at the time.
I think Dr. Nguyen.
Okay. So, we wouldn't be able to withdraw the motion, is that correct, Mr. Goheen?
Technically not because you don't have the second to approve the withdrawal. You could table it again, I suppose.
Or if we voted down, if you don't make a motion to loan it, then we can wait till everyone is here.
Yeah, you could, that might make the most sense. Vote it down and then set it on the agenda for your next meeting without any motion pending, and then you can have a full discussion and take whatever motion or action you want to at that next meeting.
So, before we do that, is there any other information that we would need from Mr. Goheen just to give him some more direction or from our leadership team to bring back if this does come back to a future board meeting? Or is there any other information that board members would need? I know, and I don't, I'm not going to speak for Dr. Nguyen, but she did ask about a policy. I know you brought this policy forward, but I think there was a request for specific policy around art or if we needed to develop one.
And that's why the other link that I had there was, so Wichita State was one I found that at least was a loan program policy that they had developed for loaning out artwork that Wichita State owned. That's the only one I could find quickly that related to, you know, a Kansas, you know, educational institution that actually owned artwork that had a specific program for how, and wonder what criteria they would loan their artwork out. It's a pretty good one to look at. It might be more than what we want, but, and I think KU might have one as well. I think the museum up at KU's got one. I couldn't find one that had, that a school district had a specific policy that dealt with the loaning of artwork owned by the school district. So, I think you'd have to look at something that one of the colleges have in place.
Now, do they put dollar amounts, like if they lose it? How much is the value? I don't remember seeing that in there.
That would be...
It might be me, I don't know.
I'm sorry. That would be covered by the agreement, so you would have a valuation placed when it's insured. So, once you sign the agreement, you'd have a valuation put in place, and you would require that insurance to be carried by the entity or, you know, museum or whoever's borrowing it for display. Sometimes, there's exhibitions that are developed that display stuff as well. You could, and there's some agreements I've seen that where they continue to carry it on the owner's insurance, but require the premium to be paid by the entity that's borrowing it. I'm not super comfortable with that just from the standpoint that we don't have any control over what's happening with the artwork if it's not here and under our control, and I'd much rather have it be their insurance that we're an additional insured on from my perspective, but that is an option if you wanted to look at it that way. That would typically be a case if you have somebody that is going to borrow it, say, a community organization that maybe cannot get the insurance on their own, which would raise red flags in my mind as to whether they're a proper entity to be able to borrow the artwork.
Thank you, Mr. Goheen. So, any other questions? If not, the motion on the floor is to not loan out the painting, and so, we're going to take a vote on that. Again, a vote, a yes vote would say we're not loaning this out, a no vote means that that motion would die, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we're all clear. All right. Any additional questions? If not, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, no.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, no.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, no.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, no.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, no.
Thank you.
Motion does not pass. So, we will bring this back to a future board meeting. If there are additional questions that board members have, please share those with Mr. Goheen, and we'll hope to bring, pick this back up at a meeting where all seven board members are present. Thank you. So, executive sessions, if you want to dismiss...
So, staff, thank you. Everyone is dismissed with the exception of Ms. Devon, Mr. Lilly, and Dr. Campbell. Thank you.
Thank you all for joining us tonight. Okay, would entertain a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow for five minutes, going in at seven-twenty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of parties involved under coma going in at 7:53 for five minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you.
You said five minutes.
Motion to return to open session.